All right, this is a web-based call and we are operating under the following procedures. This meeting is being audio and video recorded. A recording of this video will be available within 24 hours and will be posted to the Town of Waterford's Planning Department website. To ensure good sound quality, the default rule for this meeting is that everyone will remain on mute unless they are speaking. If an attendee creates an audio or visual disruption, the Zoom moderator may place them on mute or remove them from the meeting if the disruption continues. We will not use the chat feature in this meeting. There are three projects on the Commission's agenda this evening, including a public hearing for a regulation amendment and a coastal site plant. The continued public hearing for PL 20-16 for FabCon's proposed redevelopment of the former Waterford Airport will take place after the Commission reviews the other two applications on the agenda. Participants who have joined the meeting for the FabCon public hearing are encouraged to remain in the meeting and follow instructions when the public hearing for that project is announced. Once again, there are two public hearings scheduled for this evening. For each hearing, please listen for the chair to announce the public comment period. When the chair announces the public comment period tonight, you may give your comments in the following manner. One is to use the raise hand feature in Zoom and wait to be called on. Before the hearing closes, we will also ask for any new comments from people who are only able to join by phone or who are unable to use the raise hand feature. If multiple people attempt to speak at once, staff will help to moderate. We appreciate your attendance at this meeting. Should you have any questions about the process, you may call our staff at 860-444-5813 between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. And with that, I will turn it over to our chair.
And we will now call the order, the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission of the Town of Waterford on this date, November 9th, 2020 at 6:35 p.m. Okay, all members are in, so Karen, you will not be seated tonight. Item number two, approval of the October 19th, 2020 meeting minutes.
This is John Bashaw. I'll move approval of the minutes.
This is Tim Blaisdell. I'll second that.
Okay, do I have it all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We got everybody then. I'm also in favor, so a motion approved. Item number three, receipt of applications.
We have no new application for receipt.
Item number four, public hearing, PL-20-24, request of Halifax Development LLC applicant to amend the zoning regulations, section 8A dot 2 dot 5 by deleting the following, excluding drive-up windows or counter service. Public hearing must close by January 12th, 2021. Do we have the applicant on board?
Yes, sir. Hans Coolman with Halifax Development.
Good. Before, before you start, I'd like to read the exhibit list into the record. Paper application, PL 20-24, exhibit one, application and support material. Exhibit two, public hearing notice published in the day newspaper on October 26th, 2020, and November 2nd, 2020. Certified, sorry, exhibit three, certified copy of the zoning regulations, effective date, September 9th, 2020. Exhibit four, business and economic development excerpt from the Plan of Conservation and Development. Exhibit five, staff report dated November 9th, 2020, prepared by Mark B. DeWitt. Exhibit six, restaurant zoning net. Exhibit seven, proposed section 8A point 2.5.
Yes. Thank you, Mark. Okay, the applicant, you may have the floor.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for agreeing to hear our application this morning. Again, I'm Hans Coolman with Halifax Development. I believe also on this caller in this meeting is John Sharp with Collaboration Capital. Mr. Sharp was the one who brought this to your attention, I believe, on a preliminary basis back in July. He and I are jointly working with Ruby Tuesday in the acquisition and redevelopment of their property. And I've read through Mark's, the staff report prepared by the Parkwood Chevowitz. And I can certainly elaborate that out a little bit, but certainly touches on all the points that he and I have discussed as well as my application. In my application, we included a statement of use and our application is consistent with the plan, all of which you have there in front of you. So I'm more than happy to answer any questions, but I believe the information that our application is based off has all been submitted via the application and certainly the memo that Mark has prepared.
Should we have all of the materials for the purposes of those people who are on the public hearing? All right, if you could please go over those, those materials for those people who are attending the public hearing online.
Certainly, certainly. So as it relates to my application, in the application itself, what we're looking for is a modification in the, in the zoning district that is the STD district to eliminate the word excluding drive-up windows and counter service in that zoning district. And as the memo that Mark had prepared had accurately stated, I believe, out of six of your seven commercial districts in already permit drive-up service and counter service. So this also falls in line with the majority of your other commercial zoning districts. As I understand, the STD district is really isolated within the town of strictly the shopping center and the adjacent property. The I'm trying to keep up with your, I don't know exactly how you're going through the exhibits, but would be more than happy to kind of elaborate on those as you bring those up.
See, I'll talk a little bit about perhaps the, the site itself.
Certainly, the site itself is currently occupied by Ruby Tuesday, which owns the site. The restaurant has been vacant, I believe, for some time. And a preliminary plan was put together, and again, it's very preliminary and submitted to Mark and the planning staff for their preliminary review. The site currently has a freestanding Ruby Tuesday, which I believe is roughly 67, 6,744 square feet. The ultimate goal is to redevelop this property for a single-use freestanding building in the area of 3,500 to 5,000 square foot with a drive-up or drive-through facility for either a restaurant or a financial institution. And again, the site plan you have in front of you is a very preliminary site plan based off of a, basically a freestanding restaurant drive-up type use. The site plan has not been fine-tuned nor engineered at this point.
Okay. Can you just describe the drive-through areas, please? It looks like it was going to occupy where the main entrance of that building was.
Well, again, as I mentioned, that, that site plan is probably, as I submitted that site plan to Mark for a preliminary review, that site plan is one of many prototypes of an existing restaurant. And that prototype is probably going to change, or that building and that site plan will change significantly between now and when we finally get a final site plan approval. As I mentioned, it's not engineered, so it's, it's basically a drawing, a sketch plan, if you will, without any, without a lot of elaborate or detail.
Any?
So to walk through this particular site plan without additional engineering and detail is probably not very helpful because, as I mentioned, it's going to change substantially as we probably get into that process. And obviously, that plan will go before the town for your approval prior to moving forward.
As part of this, part of this application, what we're, what was being proposed here for the Commission's consideration is to remove the language relative to drive-throughs and counter service for restaurants. Any modification to the site is still going to have to come in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission for modified site plan approval. Any of the standards relative to drive-throughs that are already in our zoning regulations are still going to apply. There's no, there's no modifications proposed to things such as shoe length or bypass lanes that are required. All of that is still going to be in play. It's still required to be shown on the, on the modified site plan at such time that it, that it gets in front of the Commission. Okay, is there any Commission members that might have any questions at this time?
This is Greg Massett. In 8A point 2.6, it's financial institutions. Wouldn't we just allow a financial institution to have a drive-up the way it sits right now?
Yes.
It would, okay. So if you were planning a financial institution, you wouldn't have to do anything?
What do you hear?
Correct. You would need to meet, you know, any drive-through requirements from the town's zoning standards, but, but you would not have to have a modification of the regulations at this point.
That's right.
Okay. And I, and I know I think it's in here somewhere, but the STD district is, is Waterford Commons and where else would it be? Okay. I didn't see that in the, that wasn't in the package at all, was it?
It's these, these properties here.
Right. It's, it's essentially all that. I think there's only one parcel left within that zone district that hasn't been developed yet. But there was a site plan approved for that site with an extension, so that's still in play.
Okay, so that area right there where you are now, that's the only place in town?
The other place in town where the drive-throughs would not be allowed is in the Civic Triangle or CTMF districts in sort of the town center, which was specifically to the Commission when that Civic Triangle District was approved. The Commission shied away from allowing drive-throughs because of the small parcel size and kind of the character that was attempting, we were attempting to achieve in that area. Every other place where you see commercial industrial land highlighted that Mark has done for you, there are no restrictions on drive-throughs.
Okay, so this amendment tonight would not change the Civic Triangle?
Correct.
Great. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. We'll wait for your comments with the deliberation. Okay, at this point, we can open up the public hearing if there's anybody from the public who would like to address this application. I say for the second time, is there anybody who would like to speak for or against this application? And third and last time, is there anybody who would like to speak for or against this application? Hearing that said, I'll just close the meeting. Oh, accept a motion to close the public hearing?
A motion to close the public hearing. This is John Bashaw.
Greg Massett, second.
That was John, Greg, that was the second?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, John?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I am four as well. So the public hearing is now closed. Okay, we'll move on to item number five, application review. PL-20-23, request of Charles Hickey, applicant Charles and Claudette Hickey owners proposed a slight site plan approval to construct a single-family home on property located at 17 Division Street. Our 20 zone as shown on plans titled CAM site plan, property of Charles Hickey, 17 Division Street, Waterford, Connecticut, dated July 30, 2020, and revised to 9/15/2020. Action is required by December 1st, 2020. Okay. Do we have the applicant? On?
Yes, sir. Charles Hickey, present.
Okay, sir, if you'd just like to go over the application, please?
Sure. Also, present, I think I saw on the participants is Mr. Fanner, who is the surveyor who has prepared this map for the board. And I'm not sure if he can put his mic on or not, but he, I think he is, he is present. I can, I can just simply say a few words, quite simply, this, this application and plan before the board is almost a mirror image of a previous approved plan and CAM-approved plan by the prior owner of this parcel. And it's noted on your map, as I'm sure if, if the board has had a chance to peruse it, identify that. It's number three B noted in the notes on the right margin of the plan. That was a previously approved plan, same, same kind of house, two and a half story. Pretty much in the same location. And if my memory serves me, I'll have the plan in front of me, but that was approved somewhere in the, around 1990, 91 by this, by the Waterford P&amp;Z. So this, this is the plan. It's conforming to the prior zone with setback of 25 feet and side yard setback of 10 feet. And this was under the original RSF zone, even though it's currently under the R20. The basic problem under the R20 and why we're seeking the board's approval on the application of the prior zone standard is that if, if the, if the, if, if we had to comply with our 20 in the 50-foot front setback, it would push the structure into the flood zone, which would endanger the structure ultimately in, in a time of storm, but also in a time of, of rising tides and rising sea levels. But most importantly, probably for what this board may consider important is that the, it would begin to encroach into the floodplain of, of the Jordan Cove. So setting it to the old standard where it's a 25-foot setback does help protect the, the environmental issues that the Town of Waterford certainly is concerned about in preserving Jordan Cove and its beauty, which is why we want to live beside it and protect the, the wetlands and the lower part of the property where we're going to remove, per notes of the pre-approval of the, in the wetlands or, I assume it was in the wetlands, but whoever oversees the tidal shoreline there to approve getting rid of the poison ivy and invasive species over there. And we all, we intend to plant native species there that are appropriate for Connecticut coveside wetlands. So that's note in the notes and already provided for on this plan. The only final comment I have not to, to belabor the board's time is that all the homes in the neighborhood conform to this prior zone, the RSF zone, the house to the right, which is the most typical at 19, it has 25-foot setback and 10-foot side yard setbacks. The home right to the, I shouldn't say the right 19, the home on the other side, 15, the other adjoining neighbor, that's an 1850 historical structure as you may be able to surmise in its position, built right on the border of my property and setback from the, from Division Street, probably all of eight feet. So in any event, this is a, an area of older homes. This is the only lot that has not been developed on Division Street. And we simply want to conform to the neighborhood, which is the old, again, the old prior zone. And for reasons that I stated already, why we want to conform to avoid going into the, into the flood zone and to protect the home, but to protect Jordan Cove as well. Any questions you may have, I try to entertain for the board.
Any questions, buddy applicant?
This, this is John Bashaw. Just, just so I'm clear, the reason why this is not a request for variance, which it would be if you're asking for an exception to one of the existing R20 zone requirements, zoning requirements, is because as I read the, the description of the project, is that the lot complies with the dimensional requirements of the RSF zone, which was in effect at the time of the subdivision. I just want to have some clarity as to, as to whether or not that's the reason why this doesn't fall within kind of the area of the request of for a variance.
Yeah, this is Mark, Mark B. DeWitt, the planner. That's, that's correct, John. This is, this lot was part of an approved subdivision back in 1958. And the way the statute read that if the lot is not developed since that time, then whatever standards were in effect or setbacks at the time the subdivision was approved remain. So once the lot is developed, if there were additions to be put on or anything on the house that would extend the footprint of the house, they would need to conform to the R20. But to initially develop the lot, to put a house on it, the 1958 standards would apply.
Okay, thanks, Mark.
And John, this is Town Attorney Rob Avina.
Hi, Rob.
Following up with that, and we analyzed this with Mark. And Mark, help me if I'm wrong, but I believe in 2009, this Commission reviewed the plan under Mark's analysis, which I agree with on the prior zoning. And a particular CAM and approval was made then. And so it'd be my legal opinion and consistency with the PMZ also that they're back to update their CAM application, but based upon the same premise as the board ruled in 2009.
Yeah, this way.
Great. Thank you, Council. I restarted the wrong tape.
Yeah, that's fine, just for the record.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions at this time? Okay. Application review, so we can continue to review this one. Continue. So we'll go with the next meeting? I mean, I mean, you can review right now. Yeah. This application is for a CAM site plan, single-family. I provided members of the Commission with a coastal site plan review, written findings and decisions of these findings and decisions for this particular application. The construction and use of a single-family residential structure is consistent with the town zoning regulations and the 2012 Plan of Conservation and Development because we are located in a single-family residential district. The placement of the structure is far from the coastal resources is practical and it's still within the required zoning setbacks that were in effect in 58 when the subdivision was approved. But moving the structure or placing the structures far from the coastal resources reduces the effect of any proposed grading onto the coastal resources. The plan identifies an area on the lot within which various invasive species will be removed. And the condition of that removal will be that they will be removed by air because, because of its proximity to the tidal wetlands. Title wetlands are identified on the, on the site. There's a 25-foot bumper to those tidal wetlands identified on the plan. That's also an additional measure to protect a sensitive resource of the, of the tidal wetlands. The bumper is also designated as the rear property line in accordance to section 25.2.1 of the zoning regulations. Any potential to cause, any potential erosion or sedimentation during construction is being mitigated by the placement of a silt fence. And that the project identifies the proximity of that site disturbance of the coastal resource. It's found that the erosion control methods that are shown on the plan mitigates any erosion that may occur from the surface runoff during construction. Those erosion controls shall be left in place until the site has been permanently stabilized. Is a, there's also is a potential for a temporary negative impact to water quality during the construction phase. Again, that potential is mitigated through the installation and maintenance of the erosion control measures that are in place. Specific design elements to be implemented to mitigate the impacts of stormwater flow, things such as rain gardens at the downspout and, and however that, you know, that potential for runoff can be mitigated will be addressed at the time the zoning compliance permit is applied for, and there's, there's a building permit for construction. The project can be approved with conditions, and I have listed the conditions here in the findings, that the erosion control measures during construction shall be provided on the site for the duration of the project and until the establishment of vegetative cover on disturbed surfaces. No work covered by this permit, including the stockpiling of materials, shall be conducted west of the proposed silt fence. So everything occurs east, eastward or landward of the, of the silt fence. An as-built survey shall be submitted and approved by the zoning official prior to issuance of a certificate of zoning compliance. This requirement is to verify that all the improvements have been constructed in accordance with the approved site plan. No machinery other than a brush hog shall be used in the removal of the invasive species within the area that's been identified on the plan. Of the planting of salt tolerant native shrubs along the retaining wall and the tidal wetlands is included as part of the restoration of this area. But with that, Commission can consider action on the application. All right, thank you, Mark. Any questions or discussion on the application? All right. As hearing none, we can accept a motion if someone feels.
This is John Bashaw. I'll make a motion that we adopt as findings of the Commission, the staff summary set forth in the written findings and decision that Mark just went through with us. And that in addition there too, we approve the project with the conditions one through four is set forth in that, that same document of written findings and conditions, and in particular, that erosion control measures during construction be provided on site for the duration of the project and until the establishment of vegetative cover on disturbed areas. Second, that no work covered by this permit, including the stockpiling of materials, shall be conducted west of the proposed silt fence. Third, an as-built survey shall be submitted and approved by the zoning official prior to issuance of a certificate of zoning compliance. And that this requirement is to verify that all improvements have been constructed in accordance with the approved site plan. And fourth and final, no machinery other than a brush hog shall be used in the removal of the invasion species within the area identified on the plan and that the planting of salt tolerant native shrubs along the retaining wall and the tidal wetlands is included as part of the restoration of this area.
I second that. Great.
Greg, you seconded?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All in favor, let's start with John.
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I am also an aye, that is motion approved.
Thank you very much to the board.
All right, the next application review is PL 20-24, request of Halifax Development LLC applicant to amend the zoning regulations, section 8A dot 2 dot 5 by deleting the following, excluding drive-up windows or counter service. Discussion? Okay, hearing that, Mark, would you like to go through?
Sure. I prepared a staff
I prepared a, uh, a staff report for, uh, for the commission's review relative to this regulation amendment. Uh, one of the, uh, issues, one of the things that, um, the commission needs to consider, as with any regulation amendment or even a map amendment, uh, those changes need to be found consistent with the plan of preservation, conservation and development, uh, for the town. Uh, that is our twenty twelve plan. Uh, so, along with my, um, my staff memo, I had also submitted into the record, uh, and for the commission's review, uh, were excerpts from that plan. And, uh, my staff, uh, the memo here, uh, describes where, um, the goals that are, that are part of that X, that, that are part of the plan, and I'll briefly go over that for the record. The excerpt that was taken out of the plan is for, is the section on business and economic development. And the goal in the business and economic development section of the plan directs Waterford to promote business uh, in economic development to meet local needs and to maintain a favorable tax base. Uh, it also, um, finds that, uh, Waterford should be encouraging future business activity. So by lifting the restriction on drive-through encounter service for restaurants, uh, within the SDD district, uh, the town would be promoting business development while encouraging future business activity in that regional business area adjacent to a state highway. The town currently allows restaurants, um, with drive-throughs within six of our seven commercial and industrial districts. Uh, with the ex, the exception being, as Abby had mentioned earlier, of the civic triangle district. So currently, right now, um, we don't, we don't allow the drive-through within the SDD. Um, so then I, I mentioned the narrative that the applicant had provided along with the, um, uh, with the application material. I have a list of findings for the, for the commission on the, I'll go to a brief point. Uh, there are four, two, three, four, I'm sorry, there are five findings. There was a missed, a missed number here, but there were, there are five findings listed. First finding, application PL twenty dash twenty-four meets the requirements of section twenty-eight of the Waterford zoning regulations. Section twenty-eight is that section that describes how amendments are to be processed, uh, to the regulation. Application, finding number two, application PL twenty dash twenty-four meets the requirements of Connecticut general statutes, chapter one twenty-four, section eight dash three, governing changes of zoning regulations in districts. Finding three, the SDD zone district is located in the regional business area adjacent to the major highway and state road. Finding number four, that the zoning regulations currently allow drive-through encounter services, restaurants in six of its commercial and industrial districts. Finding number five, the proposed regulation amendment is consistent with the twenty twelve plan of preservation, conservation and development in that the modification as proposed will promote business and economic development to meet local needs, maintain a favorable tax base within the SDD district, and encourage future business activity in the regional business area that's identified in the plan. Uh, so with those findings, uh, the commission, if they so desire, can set up a motion.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, at the hearing none, we can entertain a motion.
Uh, John Bashaw, again, this is with respect to application PL twenty dash twenty-four. Uh, uh, my motion is that the commission find that the application meets the requirements of section twenty-eight of the Waterford zoning regulations, that the application also meets the requirements of Connecticut general statutes, chapter one twenty-four, section eight dash three, uh, concerning changes of zoning regulations in districts. Uh, third finding that the SDD zone district is located in the regional business area adjacent to uh, the, uh, two major highways and the state road. Uh, fourth, that the zoning regulations currently allow drive-through and counter service with restaurants in six of the town's commercial, industrial and industrial districts. And fifth, that the proposed regulation amendment, uh, as set forth in application PL twenty dash twenty-four is consistent with the two thousand and twelve plan of preservation, conservation and development in that the modification as proposed will promote business and economic development to meet local needs and maintain a favorable tax basis, tax base within the SDD district and encourage future business activity in the regional business area identified in the plan. And I would add is particularly relevant and appropriate in the time, this time of COVID nineteen pandemic. Uh, based upon those findings, um, I add to my motion that the commission approve application PL twenty dash twenty-four to amend the zoning regulation section eight, A dot two dot five, removing the exclusion therein for drive-through and counter service for restaurants within the SDD zone district, and that we adopt the findings one through five of the staff report, and emphasizing that this, uh, zoning regulation amendment applies to the SDD zone district only.
Second, Greg. All right, thank you. Uh, all in favor, John?
Hi.
Greg?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
I am also an I, motion approved.
I'd also like to put forth an effective date of this regulation amendment for December third, twenty twenty. We need maximum on that as well. Motion.
Can I get a motion on that, please? The effective date of December three, two thousand twenty?
Uh, so moved effective date of December three, two thousand twenty.
Thank you, John.
Second, Greg.
All right, thank you, Greg. All in favor?
Hi.
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 Hi. Motion approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, next item is to item six, which is to continue the public hearing of PL twenty dash sixteen, request of Fabcon precast applicant Nathan Fund, uh, one LLC owner of the special permit and site plan approved to construct a concrete product manufacturing facility on property located at one forty Waterford Parkway South, IP one zone. In accordance with section thirteen, twenty-two and twenty-three of the zoning regulations, as shown on plans entitled inland wetlands, special permit and site plan application for concrete manufacturing plant dated July seventeen, two thousand twenty. Public hearing must close by eleven, nine, two thousand twenty. Um, Mark, do you have any additional exhibits?
I do. Uh, I have a list of exhibits. I'm going to read into the record. These are exhibits that were received after the tenth, the October nineteenth meeting. Exhibit seventy-one, letter dated October first, twenty twenty, Joseph Funkley from Kevin Marks Chair, Waterford Economic Development Commission, one page. Exhibit seventy-two, Fussin O'Neil Review Comments dated October nineteenth, twenty twenty, eight pages. Exhibit seventy-three, reported conservation commission action dated October nineteenth, twenty twenty, five pages. Exhibit seventy-four, potential cul-de-sac layout, Waterford Parkway style, one page. Exhibit seventy-five, narrative statement revised to October thirtieth, twenty twenty, three pages. Exhibit seventy-six, revised site plan, forty-two pages. Exhibit seventy-seven, landscaping plan and existing vegetation dated October thirty, twenty twenty, one page. Exhibit seventy-eight, photo metric plan, two pages. Exhibit seventy-nine, letter dated October thirtieth, twenty twenty, from LaRero Engineering, response to Abby Pierceall's comments of exhibit sixty-nine, four pages. Exhibit eighty, letter dated October thirtieth, twenty twenty, from LaRero Engineering, response to Fussin O'Neil's comment, which were exhibit seventy-two, two pages. Exhibit eighty-one, letter dated October thirtieth, twenty twenty, from LaRero Engineering, response to Mark with Debbie's comments, which was exhibit sixty-eight, one page. Exhibit eighty-two, sightline and vehicle tracking analysis, one page. Exhibit eighty-three, perspective renderings dated eleven, four, twenty, four pages. Exhibit eighty-four, email correspondence from MM Den dated eleven, nine, twenty, with attachment seventeen pages. Exhibit eighty-five, email from Victor Ferry dated eleven, nine, twenty, with attached photographs, four pages. Exhibit eighty-six, October nineteenth, twenty twenty, design review board meeting minutes, two pages. Exhibit eighty-seven, email response from Fussin O'Neil dated eleven, nine, twenty, one page.
Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
All right, before we proceed, just say, uh, Joe DiVono, have you reviewed the meeting records and videos of the past meetings?
Yes, I have.
All right, thank you. Okay, and, and you feel you can, um, act upon and?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, does the applicant have any further comments?
Yes.
All right, go ahead, sir.
Yes, we do, Mr. Chairman. Uh, my name's Quinton Brown. I'm with LaRoe Engineering Associates. Our local office is at, uh, one hundred Ford Hill Road in Groton. I am joined tonight by, uh, Jeff Prince from Dacon. They are the construction managers. By Ken Heizak from PDA, who are the project architects. By Seamus Moran, who is a project, uh, manager in our office, who has appeared before you with regard to this application. And I can't see all the other attendees, but I believe there may be representatives on from, uh, Fabcon, who is the applicant also. So that's our, our team for this evening. Uh, what we hope to do, uh, this evening, uh, is, um, uh, conclude the proceedings at the, at the end. But along the way, uh, we want to sort of pick up where we left off at the last hearing on the twenty-third. Uh, spend a little time hitting six or eight items that we've heard some, um, repetitive comments a- about, and then, uh, end up by, uh, addressing your, uh, findings that you, uh, make as part of your special permit review process. So, uh, going back to the, uh, to twenty-third, uh, at that time, uh, we were advised that there were, uh, some fresh comments out, both from the planning staff and from Fussin O'Neil. Uh, we were, uh, provided with those comments and proceeded to address them in the response letters that were entered into as exhibits and also, uh, plan revisions. Um, did it, uh, point by point, uh, for each comment. Uh, I, I think those responses pretty much speak for themselves. This is a question about a particular response. We're happy to go into it, but I would not intend to, uh, belabor the process by going through each one. Uh, I, I would note that it appears that we did receive, uh, a final response from Fussin O'Neil, your third-party reviewer, uh, early this evening, which, uh, by my reading, uh, indicates that all of their comments with regard to stormwater and traffic have been, uh, have been satisfactorily addressed. But you can, uh, you know, take a look at that at your, at your leisure, certainly. Um, so moving, moving forward, uh, to touch on some of the other topics. Uh, first one is, is traffic, and, uh, uh, there are two locations that we want to speak to. One is, uh, Cross Road at, uh, Waterford Parkway North, and the other is at the site driveway. As, uh, you may recall, uh, in the testimony provided thus far, uh, both the applicant's traffic study and the Fussin O'Neil peer review, uh, confirmed that the existing conditions at Crosswater and Parkway North are, um, largely the result of a decision to eliminate operational lanes and to sub- substitute, um, bike lanes. And, uh, the project itself, this project, um, results in a, uh, very slight increase in the queue length, uh, ten feet in total, uh, to the operations that occur at that intersection, which, uh, could be characterized certainly as de minimis. Um, as part of, uh, this process, the traffic study and the plans have been reviewed by the state traffic experts, uh, Oster, as it called, also State Traffic Administration. They have no issues with, uh, what the report, uh, finds, and, uh, they are simply awaiting action by, uh, this commission before they would take their action. So it appears that, uh, those can, the conditions, um, that were discussed, uh, at Cross Road and Waterford Parkway South are, um, are actually satisfactory. Uh, secondly, I would like to go to the, uh, if I could, Abby, to the sightline demonstration plan, which was, uh, exhibit eighty-two, I believe. Great, thank you. Uh, so, uh, this, um, shows, uh, in particular up at, at Waterford Park, Parkway South, uh, what's going on there. And, uh, there was a question raised about, um, uh, what would happen if a, uh, trucks simultaneously exited and entered the, the driveway there at, uh, at Waterford Parkway South? So each one of those pairs of red lines, uh, shows the paths of the trucks, one entering and one exiting. And as you can see, right under the letters, uh, uh, pretty much, uh, U, T and H, right there, thank you, Abby. Uh, there's an overlap of the travel path. Um, we took a look at that and, uh, would agree that it's theoretically possible that, uh, that, that could happen, but is unlikely. Uh, so, but what we did to, uh, to provide a little, uh, factor of safety there is we pushed the stop bar on the driveway back, uh, a bit from Waterford Parkway South so that the exiting vehicle would actually stop a little shorter of the intersection. So if a, uh, a vehicle was entering from the, uh, from Parkway South, the exiting vehicle would, uh, uh, be out of the pathway of the entering vehicle. Um, I would comment that this condition is not unusual. If you did this analysis on, uh, your typical commercial or industrial driveway in town, you would find the same situation. You would also find it on many town streets. So, uh, we think though by, uh, by, uh, putting in, by setting the stop bar back a little bit, we've, uh, minimized the potential for that to occur. Uh, we'd go back to the overall plan, please, Abby. I think it was sheet ten.
It was still a bit of a slow thing to load. We've got the whole plan set here.
Yeah. Great, thank you. I'm not going to hop around to it between players, but I want at least to have an overall plan up so we can refer to it if we need to. Uh, the next area, um, was dust control, and there actually are two, uh, two, uh, subtopics to that. The first is, uh, during construction, and the second, second is during operation. Uh, during construction, you know, the, the typical, um, uh, measure for dust control is, uh, is to use, uh, water trucks and, and, um, get, get them around the site as, as much as needed. Uh, but because there'll be a fairly, um, si- significant area exposed, we also, uh, want to make some provision for using tackifiers or stabilizers uh, on some, uh, any problematic areas, uh, that might develop, uh, uh, during the course of the construction operation. And that would be on a, a, a spot area basis. I, I don't think it would be necessary to use it everywhere on site, and it'd be on a case-by-case basis if, uh, if we found that the, um, water, uh, watering process did not work. Um, some of these, um, stabilizers are, uh, are not appropriate to be used, um, in, in all, uh, areas. So we want to make sure that we would be full, full compliance with environmental regulations and permits. So, uh, that would guide our, our use of the type of product and its application. Again, uh, spot area, case-by-case basis, only during construction. Then on the operation side, um, uh, a few things for, in the, in the housekeeping category is, um, uh, the street, uh, street sweeping frequency of the the street sweeping frequency of the paved surfaces. And again, all of the areas around the building will be paved. Once per year in the spring would be the interval for that. Again, there'll be a water truck on site that will apply water to the non-paved areas. That's primarily the storage area on an as-needed basis. And that would be, you know, as climatic and weather conditions dictate. And there also would be periodic refreshing of the crushed stone surface in the storage area. Again, as needed, that would be seasonably inspected and then addressed accordingly. So those are the steps that would be taken to to manage dust control during the construction and operations phases of the project. The next area was sound acoustics. And as you know, there was an evaluation done by Kavanaugh Atachi that addressed sound on the site. They noted that the predominant noise contributor was I-95, which, of course, we're right near there. And they also observed that the characteristics of this operation were important to recognize. And again, while it will be a three-shift operation, a lot of the activity occurs during the daytime hours. There is some at night. It is mostly inside the plant. The work, the workload is somewhat variable. So there will be delivery of product to the yard on all shifts. And the yard vehicles will have OSHA-approved white noise devices on them. So these are some of the inputs that the noise consultant used. And having looked at that, they recommended certain operational measures be undertaken. Those are included in the noise study. And if you've had a chance to review the figures in there, you'll see that there are two areas in particular that they suggested operational measures on. And they're down, one is down at the immediately south end of the site, between the south end of the storage access road and the south property line, a two-hundred-foot-wide swath. That's the red line in the, in the sound study. And then another area, five hundred feet north of that property line, which was the yellow line on the plan. So those are two areas that would have activities that would be abbreviated during, obviously nighttime hours. The question, of course, is how do you manage that? You can't paint lines on the ground. So the applicant is, thinks that the appropriate way to do that is to have signage at those particular locations, which is clear as to the instructions of prohibition of work or types of work in those areas. Also, the other suggestion out of the, out of the sound study was to establish a one-way traffic circulation system so that the trucks that come in from outside the site don't back up and have their backup alarms go off. And again, that can be implemented and managed so that those two particular parameters from the sound study can be addressed. And with those parameters being addressed, the conclusion of the sound study was that the sound produced on the site would comply with both the Town of Waterford and the state regulations with regard to noise. Next topic was lighting. We did provide photometric plans. Those demonstrate that there is no trespass of light onto either public streets or other private property. And we've documented that the lighting is dark sky compliant, and those are the performance parameters that, you know, apply to lighting. And so we've been able to accomplish those. The next topic was views from adjoining property and from public streets. I'm going to do part of this, and I'm going to turn it over to Ken Heisak, so he can show you some renderings. But just, just a few comments about what we've thought about since the last time we met. From the south side, which is the Devonshire subdivision, we think there is an opportunity to supplement and add some more plantings in that area. And we think that we can get those from other areas of the site where we've been a little generous with the landscaping and can further supplement that landscaping that's shown in that southern area. Thank you, Abby. There was also a question about survival and replanting. For the first year, a hundred percent of the of the planted materials would be guaranteed. So if something does not survive, it's replaced by the contractor. From then on, FabCon will take the responsibility to maintain the landscaping in accordance with the plan. One other guidance is they would use some deer-resistant varieties because our four-legged friends like to eat a lot of landscaping material. And last but not least, the applicant is proposing to make provision to install a fence along the common line between the lots that are closest to the southern property line. You can see them there in that view. There's two or three houses off the end of the cul-de-sac. I think the location of that fence can be field-determined to provide some additional screening, you know, to give people a little more comfort. So there are several additional steps that could be taken there that the applicant is willing to do. Moving up to the top slide, which is the I-95 Waterford Parkway South side, we had previously shown you some renderings, which had a solid fence along the frontage, and that did not make it onto the site plan. So I wanted to clarify for you that we certainly would add that, and that would be a six-foot-high solid fence along the site frontage. And you'll see in a moment what that looks like and how that affects visibility. And when you think about the visibility and the character of I-95 in this area, we would ask you to think about some of the other sizable commercial industrial buildings that are visible, and in some cases, quite close to the highway. You've got the Webb Plumbing Facility, Sonalis, to some extent, the Coke Facility, Lowe's, and several others. So the character of that area is somewhat, you know, framed by those particular enterprises. We are obviously nowhere as close as those buildings are, nor is the site as visible as those might be. So with that introduction, I'm going to turn it over to Ken and let him take you through the renderings, and I'll come back to hit a couple more items.
Hey, thanks, Clint. If we could start here, this is the rendering that is taken from the perspective view of Route ninety-five from the northbound side. Now, again, where we start from, if you look at the lower right-hand image, the little key plan, you can see where view number one is taken. It's basically on the shoulder of Route ninety-five. That picture in the upper right-hand corner, that's the photograph that was taken, I guess it was several weeks ago, from that location. Below that is, we created a rendered model, a three-D model depicting the building, and positioned the camera looking at the building from that exact same view, that exact same position that the photograph was taken of. Again, the model, we stripped off any of the landscaping, any of the site materials, anything, so they can see. That's the actual model. And then the largest picture on the left represents really the coming together of those things, taking the actual photograph and superimposing the building with all of the applied landscaping, the fencing. So the view you're seeing is really, the building is really in the background. Maybe there's some glimpses that you're catching of portions of it, but with the amount of landscaping and the distance and the fencing, your view is really obscure. You're just, you're really seeing it just in the background. We want to go to the next slide. Again, same set of procedures, that lower right-hand corner. That's the key plan of where the view was taken from. This was on the shoulder of the southbound side of ninety, of ninety-five. So you're looking across the highway and then through a row of trees, the roadway, and then the site. So the photograph on the upper right, seeing the view, the photograph taken from that site, the lower right-hand side, the model, in that exact same position, and then superimposing that. You can't, from this view, you cannot see the building. What I've done here, you see a white line that's really outlining the rooftop of the building, just to give some perspective of where things are. But you erase those white lines. You can't see the building. There's too much in front, and there's an elevation. So it's really, the building can't be seen. To the next board, please. Again, this is taken from the exact opposite side near the residence, abutting the site proper. Again, the view is, from the key plan, is off to the upper right. And again, looking through, basically across the yard of residence, the model, as you can see, is well off in the distance. And then, similarly to the previous location, there is an abundance of foliage between this property and where the building is. The white line kind of indicates that they outline the roof line, but you can't see. There are too many trees, too many, too much vegetation between this site and the building to see it. And then lastly, the fourth rendition is taking off of the road, off of Waterford Parkway South, at the edge of the looped road across the field towards the building. We're closer to the building. This is the closest we really are in views to the building. The slide shows where that's taken. And again, with the fencing, when you're superimposing all the imagery, the fencing, I've made a graphic representation to let it see through the fencing so that you can see where the building is. But once that fencing, if you look at the line of the fencing, if you're standing there or in a car, you can't see the building. With vegetation around, you won't see anything from that view.
All set, Ken?
Yeah, I am. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we go back to the overall site plan, please, Abby? Thank you. Another question that came up was, what is the status and intention of the land to the west of Jordan Brook? As we've demonstrated, thank you, as we've demonstrated with the site plans, all of development activity is taking place east of Jordan Brook, essentially in the area that was occupied previously by the Waterford Airport and the Reynolds Metals development that never completed. So kind of a question in everybody's mind is, what's going to go on over there? And what might the intentions be? There's nothing going on over there now. The applicant does not have any feel for what they want to do. They're not in a position to entertain ideas about doing anything with that at the moment, either on their own or collaboratively. So for the time being, just going to leave it status quo and concentrate on getting the development done. Another comment that came up, I believe, from the public was having to do with water supply. And the applicant has presented estimates of their domestic and production water use. The domestic water use, which is quite low, is actually the only water that is truly consumed in that it goes out, goes in, and goes back out. The process water is recycled. There is some, obviously, some minor makeup water, but it isn't like every drop of water that goes in here every day goes back out and is only used once. So they're actually a rather small user of water. The Waterford Utility Commission and the City of New London have both approved of the connections for this project and have made no comments with respect to capacity or supply. And we do, will serve requests to them for most of our developments to make sure that there are no issues like that, and there are none. So we think we're in good shape there. The last item is just kind of a small, minor one. Abby, can you go down to that corner where the twenty-inch water line connects, yeah, right in there, maybe blow that up a little bit or go to the other sheet, whatever is easiest? It actually, we can use this one. So when Reynolds Metals built the infrastructure in here, they followed the alignment of the road system, because it was all going to, it was going to be a subdivision. So the water line comes down and loops around along that circle dash line that you see there, and then kind of takes a funny turn to the east. And that easterly terminus is where it ties back into the existing twenty-inch water main that traversed the property before it was developed by Reynolds. So we don't have any as-built plans, but we do have the design plans, and we've gone out in the field. And it appears to us that that's exactly what was done. We'll have to do a little checking on that for verification at construction time, but it appears that that is what has happened, what was done. So we're pretty comfortable with that. So from there, I'd like to move to the finding statement, and we can bring that up on the screen, if you could, Abby. Great, thank you. So as you know, there are certain findings that the commission needs to make with regard to several aspects of the zoning regulations of the project. And the applicant prepared a document here that links the findings with the various exhibits that have been submitted, and I just would like to walk you through that. The first is compliance with the adopted Plan of Preservation, Conservation, and Development. And when we look through the both, the two thousand twelve, oops, got a little typo there, I see, excuse me, P O C D and the two thousand fifteen update, both of them stressed economic and business development in the town with respect to the particular location being proposed on the business development plan, which was a M A T. It depicts it as being appropriate for industrial development. The narrative portion of the document advocates future business activity to be encouraged in the regional business areas adjacent to major highways. This site certainly fits that. It also recommends changes to permitted uses and dimensional standards to strike a better balance between community interests and those of the business. And as you probably recall, the zoning regulations for the industrial park district were changed to allow the proposed use of this site, contingent, of course, upon special permit approval. So conclusion here is that it's entirely consistent with the P O C D in all respects. With regard to orderly development, when the text amendments were done, considerable care was taken. There was a lot of discussion about how to provide for this facility in the industrial park zone with appropriate standards that would be in harmony with the town and the neighborhood in which it might be located and not hinder development of adjoining property. And we would suggest that the site layout and the landscape plans respectively demonstrate that the project meets and, in many cases, exceeds the minimum standards in the regulations, particularly for such things as landscaping and landscaping buffers. Next is property values. As you know, what we have right now is a underutilized Uh, as you know, what we have right now is a, uh, underutilized site that was formally developed. The only activity going on there now is, uh, a contractor is storing, uh, vehicles and equipment there, uh, not a very productive use of what is otherwise a, a, uh, very, uh, high potential, uh, property. And, um, uh, the development for the proposed use would certainly, uh, substantially increase its value and benefit neighboring properties and a town as a whole by increasing and diversifying the tax base. Uh, and again, uh, as indicated in the statement of use and in the site plans, uh, the manufacturing, storage of the, most of the bulk materials to be used in manufacturing process will be stored inside the building and not be visible to the public or neighbors. Uh, the outdoor storage of the finished work, the concrete panels will be done in an organized fashion as shown on the conceptual storage layout plan so that the property does not appear unsightly or it may be visible from any adjoining properties. And again, substantial landscaping has, uh, will be established, both internal to the property and buffers will be enhanced along its boundaries as shown in the landscaping plan. Uh, moving on to public safety. Uh, the site is located, uh, of course, at the east end of Waterford Parkway South, which is a maintained public street, uh, which ends just easterly to the site. And as indicated on the site plan, uh, access is gained, uh, over a boulevard-type drive that provides, uh, access to the building from two different directions over the internal drive system. There is saw, full access around the building and within the outdoor storage areas as shown on the plan. Uh, we have solicited comments from the, um, emergency servicers. There have been no comments from them as to any planned inadequacies or requested any, uh, changes to those, uh, access arrangements. Uh, Exhibits six and nine, uh, indicate that. So, uh, conclusion there is there's adequate provision made for access to the building for fire, police and other emergency equipment. Uh, moving to traffic. Again, the, uh, traffic conditions were well described in the traffic impact study prepared by K W H Enterprises and as reviewed by your third-party reviewer and, uh, confirmed as to methodology and data. Uh, report concludes that, uh, there's acceptable intersection level of service will be maintained, uh, at the intersections and most traffic approaches. The only exception to that is the, the one where we have the, the ten-foot increase in queue. Uh, and the plan is expected to produce limited traffic impact on the areas and that is confirmed by, uh, both your third-party review and the Oster State Review. And again, the site plans demonstrate that off-street parking and loading, uh, meets or exceeds all of your applicable requirements. Uh, there was a, a comment, uh, made about making provision, uh, for a right-of-way for a future cul-de-sac turnaround easterly of the site. And, uh, that's been shown on the site plan now. And, uh, that will provide a place, uh, to construct a full cul-de-sac so that people will not use the site driveway or property for a turnaround. So a lot of people go down there thinking they can cut through and they can't. So that will, uh, be a first step in resolving that problem. We also looked at sightlines from the driveway, both for passenger vehicles. That was found to be adequate. And, uh, based upon a, a comment, we also took a look at truck sightlines. Those are, uh, somewhat more stringent, requiring more distance and that, uh, the sightline demonstration plan, Exhibit six, uh, Exhibit sixty-three, uh, demonstrates that those both work. Uh, there'll be a little minor, uh, uh, maintenance of landscaping in front of the building, but we can set the fence and the landscaping behind that line so that they, uh, everything works together. Uh, landscaping and buffers, uh, is the next item. And again, the landscape plans, uh, demonstrate how the landscaping has been developed, taking into, into account, uh, existing conditions, uh, trying to complement the building and the site and provide screening to adjacent properties. There won't be any loss in buffers. In fact, uh, the rear buffer at Devonshire has been increased from the minimum of forty under the zoning regulations to a hundred feet in width. And, uh, again, those site renderings offer a glimpse of, uh, what those, uh, uh, buffers and screening, uh, look like and what they'll do, uh, as they mature. Excuse me. Next is, uh, utility drainage and impact on community facilities. Uh, site is well-served by public utilities of adequate capacity. Uh, again, we've got comments from, uh, water and sewer, uh, to that, to that, uh, effect. Uh, public water is available both in Waterford Parkway South in front of the site and actually in the site. Sewer is in an easement along the west side of the site, uh, and, and internal to the project. And natural gas service is available in Waterford Parkway South immediately west of the site. And all those are shown on the utility plans. So site is well-served by, uh, utilities for industrial, support industrial development. Uh, all, uh, also, uh, with further consultation with the water and sewer providers, it was determined that a, a lot of the water and sewer infrastructure that was built by Reynolds Metals should be, uh, completely removed and replaced, uh, uh, in kind, uh, where needed for the new project and that the existing twenty-inch water transmission line should be relocated and provided in a proper, uh, easement of twenty-foot width. Right now, the easement's only eight feet wide. So, uh, that, uh, also has been accommodated in the, uh, on the site utility plans and the utility plans. Uh, finally, stormwater. And again, the important things here to manage, uh, water quality and quantity. And that will all be done on-site in accordance with established standards and guidelines. Uh, Connecticut Stormwater Manual and your own, uh, regulations. Uh, those are well-documented in the Stormwater Management Report and the Stormwater Management Plans. Those were thoroughly reviewed by both your staff and by the third-party reviewer and found to be adequate and complete with a, a few minor technical items. And I think we actually took care of those based on what I saw tonight from the latest comments. Uh, these facilities will not impact any public drainage structures, any neighboring properties or any community systems. Uh, moving to compliance with the zoning regulations. Thank you. Uh, again, uh, the, the site plans have been developed, uh, to be an asset to the town and contribute in a positive fashion to, uh, community character uh, by taking a site that is underutilized and somewhat underattractive and converting it into a productive site with economic benefits, including tax base, employment opportunity and diversification. Uh, you saw the letter of endorsement from the Economic Development Commission. Uh, the project also, uh, does some good things for, uh, environmental resource protection, both Jordan Brook and Nevin Brook environments and their habitats. Uh, wetland, uh, buffers are respected. There's proactive, uh, management of water quality. It is an expanded conservation easement along Jordan Brook. So these actions coupled with all the actions outlined above all serve to, uh, uh, contribute in a positive way to maintaining the overall health and welfare of the entire community. So, uh, that's our, uh, our statement for how we believe we comply with, uh, with your findings. I think that, uh, is it for our presentation. Certainly would be happy to, uh, answer any questions and address any comments that come up. Any other commission members have any questions or comments at this point?
I have a question. This is Karen. Um, you mentioned about the water trucks that are used for the dust control. Will those trucks be filled up on-site or are they from somewhere else? And is that included in that eleven thousand one hundred gallons per day?
Did you hear that question?
Uh, I didn't hear it clearly. I'm sorry. Oh, could, could you repeat it for us, please?
Sure. I said that when you were talking about the, uh, dust control, you mentioned water trucks. And I was wondering if those are filled up on-site or if that water is trucked in from somewhere else? And if that's included in your eleven thousand one hundred gallons per day number?
Uh, they would nor, ordinarily be filled up on-site. Um, it's not a huge amount. Um, uh, a water truck is, is not that big. Uh, you see them on construction sites. I don't know exactly how many gallons they hold, but it's not, uh, it's not a huge amount. I don't see that contributing significantly to, uh, water consumption.
Okay. One follow-up on the water consumption. Uh, in our last meeting, there was some mention about expanding the facility within two to five years. Uh, you have any numbers on how much more water that would consume?
Jeff, can you handle that one?
Um, I'm, I'm sorry. Could you repeat that question, Ms. Brown?
Sure. I said that in our last meeting, at our last hearing, it was mentioned that you've got some plans for expansion within the next five years or so. And I was wondering if there are any numbers for the increase in water consumption that go with that expansion? Are we talking about like doubling the number, just thirty percent? Um, just to get a ballpark idea of, um, what, what water consumption we might be looking at in the future?
Let me take a stab at that. I believe the, uh, discussion we were having was with regard to enclosure of the overrun extension on the northern side of the building, which would not contribute to any additional water consumption.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments?
Uh, yeah, Joe, this is John Bashaw. In Exhibit seventy-nine, which is the October thirty, Lorero response to, uh, questions, I think, that Abby had originally raised. And in, um, number two, on the second page of that document, there's a statement, it, it talks about third-shift operations. And it says, "Certain restrictions will be placed on nighttime product staging operations performed by diesel trucks within the vicinity of the southern property line." If, if the commission were looking to find where those re, certain restrictions exist in the documents, that the commission were looking at that for purposes of maybe incorporating them as a condition to approval, where would we find those restrictions?
Those would be found in the acoustic report.
So the restrictions that, okay, so these restrictions that you're talking about, they are just the ones that are in the acoustic report?
Correct, Clint?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And the other, another question that I have, um, is with respect to the former Haley and Aldrich study, which did identify some prior uses of the property. Uh, one is a landfill. Uh, you know, conditions that could create a potential discovery of hazardous substances or hazardous materials soils, um, on the property. I know that Fussin O'Neil had recommended that an L E P be available throughout all time periods of the work. And I did see the response by the applicant that they didn't think that that was necessary. One question I have for you, though, is in doing the cutting and filling to build a building, are you going to be using on-site soils to do any of the, uh, removal and filling? And my, and my concern here being, how are you going to make sure that, that soil that you're going to reuse on the property doesn't contain some type of contaminant?
Sheamus or Clint, you want to take that?
Well, uh, uh, I, I believe that there's still, uh, uh, I don't think we need to have, uh, this is Clint Brown, by the way. Um, I, I don't think it's necessary to have an L E P full-time. Uh, certainly, there may be, uh, some, uh, periodic, uh, instances where excavation is occurring in an area where there may have been, uh, a former, uh, fuel tank or, uh, may have been some, um, particularly with the airport, some, uh, aircraft maintenance. And that would be the areas that would, uh, merit, uh, an inspection at that time. So, uh, but a, a lot of the site, you know, uh, uh, it was just runways or it was open, uh, would not need to be, uh, observed. But, uh, the areas where historic activity occurred, uh, it would be appropriate to, uh, have them looked at.
Yeah, and I don't necessarily disagree with the concept. But I mean, I don't think you need an L E P there, you know, day-to-day. Uh, I think you might need an L E P doing oversight of whoever is on this, on the property, uh, observing the presence of potential hazardous substances. But with respect to the refilling of, of materials on the property, the question I, Clint, that I don't think I really did get an answer to was, how are you going to make sure that the movement of soil on the property doesn't involve the replacement of any contaminated soils from one location to another?
Uh, Mr. Bishar, if I can, some, maybe, uh, to try and answer that. Haley and Aldrich will be full-time monitoring all of the soils activities on the site, all of the cuts, all of the fills, all of the compaction. And any soil removals or inputs will be monitored by Haley and Aldrich at the time of construction. Uh, we have done environmental testing throughout the site because we knew that there was a potential because of previous, um, action measures, uh, that were taken when the fuel tanks were removed and the soils were removed and mitigated. So we, and also, our development does not extend over on top of or into the landfill. We know the limits of the landfill. So the eastern landfills and any of the landfill areas are not where we're working. All of our development is outside of the landfill area. It is, does involve work where the operations buildings were, where the, were fuel tanks, where the tanks were removed and where they were properly documented when they were removed. So, um, if we encounter materials that are questionable during excavation, those will be able to be identified by the trained soils technicians that are watching the work.
Great. Thank you. That's very helpful.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Okay, um, that being said, Mark, you're also, yeah, right now.
I have a couple of questions.
Abby has a few questions.
Yeah, this is, this is Abby, personal planning director. Just for clarification, the, the, in tonight's presentation, um, and at least in the rendering of the, on the site plan from the, um, view from the highway and from Parkway South, there were references made to fencing, um, so both along the, the north edge of the property and, um, along the southern edge, along the residential properties. Has the applicant team given any, um, consideration to the height or materials that you intend to use in that fencing, given that we don't have those details on our plans?
Uh, I think I can answer that, Clint, Clint Brown. Uh, the height would be six feet and the material would be, uh, probably more than likely not wood and, but it would be something that, um, you cannot see through either, uh, the PVC-type fencing or a chain link with the, uh, with the ribbon in it.
And then, um, one of the, the, some of the responses in, um, in the applicant team's response to my previous comments, can you clarify just for the commission, what, which vehicles will and will not be using, uh, OSHA-compliant white noise alarms? Specifically, you know, sort of during those, those nighttime hours. I know we talked about one-way traffic circulation. Are there any conditions under which vehicles, um, equipped with beep, beeping backup alarms would be employed during nighttime hours?
All vehicles that, that are company vehicles that stay on-site will have white noise alarms. Any on-road vehicles will use the alarms that they're equipped with.
And is, is the, is the, are there opportunities in the way in which the yard is managed that those on-road vehicles that travel off-site that are not equipped with the white noise alarms, um, would or would, or could be going backwards during those nighttime hours? It has just that, that operational piece. I know there's the loop road that intends for one-way circulation, uh, but do those trucks need to back in anywhere in order to make pickups or access the entry pranks?
Well, um, as, uh, we demonstrated in the conceptual layout plan, it's, it's, it's a pretty simple layout. All of the aisles are parallel. So it would be pretty easy for, uh, a vehicle to, uh, make a circuit without having to, to back up and, you know, to position themselves, uh, next to a group of panels so that they could, uh, be, uh, next to a group of panels so that they could be be loaded onto them. That's, you know, keeping it simple, I think, is the secret. I think, well, it might not be exactly like like the concept plan. I think that is one way to do it that would minimize vehicles needing to back up.
Okay, thank you.
I just follow up on that for a real quick second. So if a vehicle, an off, an off-road vehicle is driving through that area at midnight, and it's moving, positioning itself by a gantry crane for a load, and the truck, for whatever reason, goes too far, it misses the the target, it goes beyond the point where it can properly load from the gantry crane. Is the driver going to be instructed at that point that that driver needs to basically do that loop again to avoid backing up? Or is the driver simply going to, at that point, put it in reverse and decide to back it up to get it into position? And this kind of gets away is what will your off-road vehicles be instructed to do with respect to the evening use of the southern storage area?
I think generally, one way means one way. And and I would say that that would, that would have to be generally acceptable. And and I, you know, I can't say that there wouldn't be a a rare instance where somebody wouldn't pay attention to the rules, but we would endeavor to have the rules enforced.
There is a, this is Clint Brown again. There is actually a check-in building when vehicles come into the property, and that would be an opportunity for them to to be reminded of that either by signage or by personnel that are stationed at that facility. Okay, any other questions or comments at this point? All right, hearing done. I guess it's time to open up the public hearing. Yeah, so anybody who would like to make comments on this application, that opportunity is now. So is there anyone who would like to speak for or against or make a comment?
And Victor, Victor's had his hand up for some time. We'll just ask folks if you could please identify who you are, since not all of your titles on the screens they reflect your your names. We just want to make sure we capture who you are for the record. But Victor is first in line.
All right. Victor? Victor, are you there?
Vic, you're on mute.
There we go. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Mark, Abby, thanks for the opportunity and thanks for posting the pictures. I've had, over the course of this, since we learned about it, I've had the conversation with Mark Peterson from FabCon. And I am president of the forty, you, can you hear me okay?
Victor, could you please identify yourself and your residence location?
Yeah, I'm Dr. Victor Ferry. I live at twenty-three Beechwood Drive, approximately nineteen hundred feet or thereabouts from where you proposed to this plant would go. And we were forgotten on the on the original plan notification. Atria, which is further north of us, was notified, we were not. Thanks to Abby and Mark, we were notified. We learned of the plant plans well after the fact. And anyway, our greatest concern is with the truck traffic and noise. And, you know, for somebody from the state or some planning agency to say conditions are satisfactory is way off base. For example, there are well over three hundred emergency calls in this development right here that I'm in. Twenty-six of those calls were ambulance or fire department calls for the residents here. The remainder were at Atria, and then not included in the traffic study. In addition, we have other folks from the medical facilities coming down. We have people, visitors coming down this way all the time. In fact, there was a sixty-five-foot trailer truck that pulled in here, and we had to excuse him and make him back out, not turn around on our roads, which are private. But anyway, our our point is that that the road conditions here are not safe. The visibility, as the gentleman, Mr. Brown said, for trucks is not not good. It's not good for the for the folks in passenger vehicles either. Right? Just yesterday, I got a complaint from one of our residents that one of the trailer trucks that currently goes back and forth came up over the hill, which is on a curve and a hill, and was 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 going rapidly down the road and almost T-boned him as he was pulling out. So those are conditions that exist. We live here. We're not making this up in terms of a study looking at just numbers of cars or vehicles. And I've served twenty years on the Emergency Management Advisory Council. I'm a FEMA certified instructor for emergency management in several areas, mostly with schools. I'm a retired school administrator. So our greatest concern is the condition of the road. The guardrails are, the poles are literally falling down, literally. There's twenty of them that have been identified, over twenty, by Gary Schneider, who I've asked to take a look at that. And I've walked down there just yesterday. I submitted three phone calls, three photographs this morning. Or was it yesterday morning? I think it was this morning, to Mark, and he posted them. If if you could get the state to open up the entrance to I- ninety-five and have those trucks use that entrance as it was open years ago, it was used over this weekend by a fire truck going to on an emergency call. I mean, you would alleviate most of the the traffic issues associated with this project. Now, if if it could be entrance and exit, that would be wonderful. But the road itself really needs to be rebuilt. For example, just east of the weigh station, the road is caving in. It's got literally, it's cupped on both both sides of the right lane exiting, excuse me. And the the road is cracked, it is separating. So I would suggest you've, you folks take a ride down there. Now, on another matter, in terms of what's going to be in the future in this place, approximately, I think they're going to use about eighty acres. So that means there's maybe a hundred and eight acres available for future development of some sort. Our border, one of our corners, is a hundred and fifty-one feet from their borders. So when I put that in writing and requested some information on it, they sent back, oh, you're going to be three hundred and fifty feet from the plant. Well, that's, that wasn't my, that wasn't my request. That, well, I wanted to know what was going to in that that area, and I considered that obfuscation as opposed to responding directly to my question. And, you know, that's, that that doesn't help the situation. It just gets us annoyed with not getting the the specific responses that we want. What is going to be planned there in the future? That land is high and dry. It's not marshland, it's not wetlands. Now, let's see what else I've got here. If you can get the state, who owns Parkway South, by the way? Has that been resolved, Mark?
So this this may be an opportunity for our town attorney to weigh in as well. This is a right-of-way that has been managed by the town for decades, and I think, Rob, I just saw you unmute, so I'll let you take over some of this.
Sure, Town Attorney Rob Bavina, don't want to take up Victor's time, but just quickly, there is an outstanding agreement for the building of the parkways that goes back to the sixties and seventies. In that agreement, the state agreed to build them, and the town agreed to acquire them. In the meantime, before the final acquisition and construction, the town also agreed to maintain them. So technically speaking, the only thing left to do now under that agreement is for the RTM to vote to accept the roads. However, the state finally finished all their surveying legal descriptions and easements of that road just about a year ago now. And so we've been reviewing those plans with the state. But the town attorney's opinion at this point is, A, we've always had to maintain them. That was in the original agreement. And B, the original agreement of calls for the town will eventually receive the deeds for those roads. So it doesn't own them, the answer, is that correct? It it does everything but have the fee to them, but they are public roads and they are maintained by the town.
Okay, but the state owns it, is that correct?
State still has ownership of the fee.
That's the end.
We don't, but but Victor, I just want you to know, we don't own many, many roads in town. They're still public roads.
Correct. I I just thought that should need clarification there, because before the town accepted, we really need to fix it up. And before you're going to put eighty thousand pound vehicles on it, because the guardrails, as I say, are falling down, the road is cupping, and it's separating. And that's, I have to be concerned about the safety of my my personnel here. I represent forty homeowners. They've got about twelve million dollars invested here. And we feel that this this plant will not have a positive effect with the truck traffic. It's going to bring fifty to a hundred trucks a day. And every fifty trucks means it's going to go in and out, which is a hundred trips. So that's what we're concerned about. It's probably the town needs to to fess up here and take care of that safety issue that that concerns us. Otherwise, you know, we can ameliorate our opposition to the plan as presented. We don't want to stop the development. We simply want to make sure it it doesn't interfere with our serene environment. This was, when this place was built, it was an area designed for senior living. And that's what exists here. And it's not conducive to have a concrete manufacturing plant right nearby with all this proposed noise unless they can ameliorate it. And hopefully, they're doing that. That's what it sounds like. I enjoyed my conversations with Mark Peterson at FabCon, and he assured me that they would take care of that. But, you know, if it's not in writing, it doesn't exist. That's what I, my staff used to tease me about, because I used to say that all the time, but it exists as a reality of life. So we need to get those kinds of things in writing. Thank you for the time, and thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation.
Anyone else who has any comments?
It looks like someone labeled Dad's iPhone, if you could identify yourself.
Yeah, that's Mike Basetto.
All right, Mike, and your residence?
Two oh seven Great Neck Road, Waterford, Connecticut.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, so I just just calling, first of all, thank you for your service on the board. Thank you for the developer trying to come into town. And thank you for the residents and people who have concerns of what Waterford looks like and acts like for the future. I just asked the commission, the town, to seriously consider approving this measure. Because in this, in this state, it's tough to do business, one. In this economy, it's even tougher. And we are looking to attract business to, one, show that we are open for business. And that's why I ask that the commission look for ways, you know, that's mutually beneficial for residents as well as the town, to find a way to approve it. Too many times, things come forward and and the the checklists are out of why this is a bad thing. So I just want to say that, please, seriously, consider it. Consider the economic economic impact as far as taxes and so forth. And also, just, and I know Vic very well, and I live on Great Neck Road, and we already have tractor trailers coming in and out with a driving school. And if anybody that's sitting there, maybe Mark or anybody can, if there's been a huge accident increase or anything on that end, I mean, I see the tractor trailers every day. There's, there's dozens of trips inside and out. I come back and forth to Philomena's, which, by the way, is on two sixty-two Boston Post Road, in case you want to visit. But the tractor trailers come in and out, up to seventy-five feet long. So if that can alleviate, if, you know, if everyone does the right thing, and the developers, I ask them to please listen, you know, to the residents and their concerns, because they are valid, and address anything the commission and the and the office asks for, because Waterford is a great town. But to continue to be a great town, we have to have great tax revenue, and we have to maintain services. And if we can approve something like this, that will significantly help us in our day-to-day operations while aesthetically pleasing, you know, as best we can. I think moving forward, as you guys have seen, this political environment and just social environment, peacefully coexisting i- is the way of the future. So just wanted to voice, you know, my thoughts to just strongly consider how to approve it, not strongly dissuade people from coming to Waterford. So thank you so much.
All right, you're welcome, Mr. Basetto, and you're welcome for the opportunity to plug your your resume.
Yeah, I didn't even get to the specials yet, but we'll talk about that the next hearing.
All right, is there anybody else who would like to speak for or against?
Looks like Myra Amstanna is the next person?
Who was it?
Myra?
Myra?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Thanks again. Appreciate all the information and education that I've been getting over the last month. Um,
By yourself and your residence?
Oh, yes. Hi, my name is Myra Amstanna, and I live at forty Rockwood Drive. I don't live down in the nice, quiet community of Great Neck Road, but I do live in the wonderful area of Fog Plain Road in middle central Waterford. And so I I do, I've, I've talked with Mr., with Dr. Ferry a few times, as well as knowing Mike, and I am not, for one thing, anti-development. I would love to embrace all the development that Waterford can bring. I definitely agree with that. I just, a lot of the questions that I had in my last round of what I could review, what you discussed tonight, thank you all. You really did respond to some of that in terms of the water consumption and the issues. So I, so I thank you for that. I still do have various concerns, not right now, about what's going to go on as they're developing a state-of-the-art facility in the town. It's where we are fifteen years from now. And so just making sure that we have what's in place and reading the the various commissions in terms of the the requirements, Conservation Commission and everything. I have absolutely no hesitation whatsoever in terms of what you all bring to the table for the town and representing the town. Couple of questions, though, remaining for me that I wanted to see if there was any consideration if we bring this in, why there needs to be a hundred and eighty acre parcel of land purchased to develop only forty acres? Is there any way in an industrial situation to parcel that land out so that the 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 amount of acreage they buy is only needed for what they consume? I don't know if there's been any discussion, nothing that I could find within the information that I read about, you know, we have this green initiative, getting Waterford to go solar. If they're going to have a hundred and thirty thousand square feet, is there an opportunity to use that landscape to bring in energy in 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 a in a more go-forward manner for long term? I do have some questions about what I have read through just what I can find on the internet regarding some concerns about FabCon as an employer overall. What, we need jobs, jobs are great. What will they do for the variability that they even discuss within Exhibit seventy-nine to Abby? And I think it's, it's really, where is it, in the first? According to the applicant, it is highly unlikely that the typical daily activity will be the same activity that occurs at night. Nighttime operations are generally much less frequent and mostly occur inside the plant. Demand for the product is highly variable, which creates peaks and valleys in production. The applicant does not produce any stock product. So it does not, does not produce any stock products, so the production schedule fluctuates with demand. So I would like to know if production is highly variable, how are employees maintained for employment? Does FabCon use furlough options impacting unemployment benefits within the state? How many full-time employees will be employed, and what are the salaries being considered for this part of the country? They've got a various range in their plants in size. We would be the largest plant that they have developed, that they will be developing. And so I'm curious as to what will be created here versus the others. And will they put the benefits and the safety of the employees first? I did, I did provide what I could find several years ago. I did provide what I could find several years ago of an instance where an employee, sorry, not, not an employee, but I, I, they use unionized employees. I don't know if they do now. If we can have unions, that's great. But if unions should go on strike and they're using temporary employees, what is the safety that they will utilize to ensure that people are properly trained? There was also a recent death in Ohio this year to one of their employees being crushed. And so I want to know what they will do here to ensure Connecticut employees are safe. Last but not least, as, as Mike pointed out, in this environment, it's hard to do business. But what are we going to do during a pandemic to ensure that our state infection rate, as it is increasing, will be adhered to by the developers of this? And so will they be providing quarantining and testing as applicable for people that are coming in to do construction, which I would assume they would be very specialized people coming in from out of state? So those are my main points of concern to ensure that our public now, the town residents are safe and that 10, 15 years from now, we will have a state-of-the-art facility employing people and maintaining a state-of-the-art facility, not looking like some of their facilities that you can see on Google. And again, with dated pictures, there may be, but you know, what's their budget for maintaining? How much, you know, how much of their profit margin is used to maintain their facility?
Yeah, I'm going to have to cut you off now because a lot of what you talked about is not pertinent to zoning regulations and this application.
Thank you, sir. Just want to make my, just make myself heard. So
Thank you very much.
Looking out for Waterford and the public. Thank you.
Anybody else who has anything that they would like to contribute? And please keep it to zoning regulations and what is specific to this application?
Is it Kevin Tim? Kevin Marks?
Kevin?
Hi there. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I just wanted to read my letter as the chairman of the Economic Development Commission for Waterford. I wanted to read the letter into the, into the, the meeting tonight, if, if I can.
Okay, Kevin, please state your name and your address, please.
My name is Kevin Marks. I reside at 12 Pamela Way in Waterford, Connecticut, and been a part of this town for 18 years. And I am currently the Economic Development Commission Chair. I noted a letter to Joseph Bunkley on October 1st that was voted on by the entire EDC and was unanimously accepted. The letter reads, "We are excited to hear that the FabCon Precast has turned in an application to the planning and zoning for the development of the new facility at the old airport site in Waterford. We, the Economic Development Commission members, put our full support behind this application in the hopes that this process is seen through to completion. Our support is not just vocal, but we offer our time and attention to assist in any way needed to ensure this application is approved. We are eager to welcome FabCon Precast to the town of Waterford and look forward to a long business relationship." That's, that's all I wanted to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who would like to make comments? Can I say for the second time, is there anybody who would like to speak for against or make comments about this application? Third and last time, is there anyone who is like to speak for or against or make comments for this application?
The applicant had an opportunity to respond.
Yep. Okay, the applicant, applicant may have the opportunity to respond to any of these comments that you've heard if you'd like.
Mr. Chairman Clint Brown, I, I think actually our presentation dealt with the topics that came up. I, I don't see a need for us to add anything to what we've already put on record.
All right. Thank you, sir. Okay, that said, I guess we can entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
John Bashaw moved that we close the public hearing.
Do I have a second, please? All right, I'll second that motion.
I'll second it. Greg?
Okay. We have a motion in a second. All in favor, John?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And I, I also. So the public hearing is now closed. Okay. We going to read? Discuss this at all time?
So currently there is no discussion or deliberations listed on the agenda for this evening. One of the things that we would do is add this to the agenda for the commission to discuss. Obviously, there's no other public comments or new exhibits that would be added, but the commission would begin deliberations on its regular meeting on November 20th. That meeting, although there is no public comment allowed, it would be open to the public for anybody who wishes to observe.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on, on the agenda, item number seven is correspondence. We have them. Thank you. Item number eight, administrative review, which is the 2021 meeting schedule.
Yep. And what you have before you is two, two potential meeting schedules. We have one that reflects our traditional Monday night meetings. And at one point earlier this year, the commission talked about the potential to moving meetings to Tuesdays to avoid conflicts with holidays, RTM meetings and similar things. And it seemed like there was some support with the commission members for moving to Tuesdays. So with that, what we'd like to do, or we're asking the commission to do, is to vote on one of these schedules to become the official 2021 commission meeting schedule.
Any preferences out there?
This is John. I don't have a preference for either Monday or Tuesday.
Anybody else?
Do I get to vote?
You can, you can state your availability and then whether, I mean, do you support one or the other?
Yeah, right. You know, I'm looking at the Tuesday schedule. It doesn't really matter one way or the other for me, but you know, to, to avoid conflict with holidays and, and some of the meetings that are going on in town. Tuesday might be a better evening. But I'm open to anybody's suggestions and, and pretty much what they want to do.
Yeah, this is a Tim. You know, if it makes it easier for us to share town facilities with some of the other boards and commissions and other sorts of public meetings and gatherings that we may have. I think, you know, Tuesday would work just fine for me. And, and, you know, I don't have a strong preference either way, but if it makes it easier for our facility use, sharage, Tuesday is fine with me.
Okay, thank you, Tim. John, you stated you did not have a preference. Aaron, you the same?
I would say Tuesday would be my preference, but I can accommodate.
Greg?
Doesn't matter to me.
And Joe?
Doesn't matter.
Okay, so we got two don't matters. And it looks like three that would, would entertain the Tuesday idea. So if somebody wants to put into a motion, which one they'd like to see move forward, I would definitely entertain that.
This is John. I guess I'll move that we adopt the Tuesday agenda. I mean, sorry, the Tuesday schedule.
And this is Tim. I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, John?
Yep, aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Who did I miss? Tim?
Aye.
And I'll vote for the Tuesday as well. So Tuesday schedule, we will be the one we will send to the town clerk and adopt for 2021.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't see on here the
No, the, the agenda went out before. So this is, what we have before you right now is the draft of the 2019, 2020 annual report for the commission. You'll be receiving the budgets at your next meeting. So you'll be able to go, go through that in, in the next round of decisions. But this is, I just want to do first. So we're giving it to you ahead of time. And essentially, you know, for folks who haven't been through this before, every year the commission puts out an annual report. Historically, that's been kind of a one, one and a half page, this list of permits and that kind of stuff. This year, we've tried to give a little bit more sort of public outreach education opportunity, help people understand a little bit more about what it is the commission does and what kinds of services are offered through the commission and through this department. So part of this is an effort just to be a little bit more user-friendly and illustrate for people what is, is going on. What we've tried to do here is give sort of a summary of the services the commission provides, what kinds of applications are typically approved and what, which ones were approved during the fiscal year 2020. We've given an outline of commercial developments and then what's gone on, what zone changes went on. And again, we tried to provide a little bit more explanation as to what these things are as we go forward. Zoning compliance permits, we tried to illustrate a little bit more about just how many we see in the, in the course of a year. Those are, there are permits that are reviewed primarily by our zoning officer this past year, because we had some vacancies there. Mark certainly stepped in and did a lot of that review for us as well. And then a, a quick, quick piece on the municipal, municipal projects that the commission reviewed, both the softball field, the beach. We, we made recommendations on the exceptions of 13 Parkway Drive down in Bridgewood. So there's been some, some good projects that have gone on. And then making permanent the gas line easement out at the public works facility. We also wanted to do a little bit on enforcement for folks. And we'll be coming out with some more robust enforcement reporting. Now that we're sort of fully up and running with our reporting software, but this just gives you an idea of the volume of cases that we're seeing and the work that we're doing to try to make sure folks are compliant with the regulations that this commission passes. So that's an important piece as well. And then we also just wanted to give an overview of the fees that we are taking in. It's, I think, what, 2013, 2014 was the last time this fee schedule was modified. But this just gives you an idea for the number of applications that we talked about in the early part of the report, how much that looks at in revenue. So with that said, if there's any questions or any feedback on the format, what we'd like to do next is get your concurrence that this is okay to submit and then forward it on to the first election for his review.
Anybody have any questions? Recommendations?
This is John. Just one, one thing that just struck, struck me as I was looking at this earlier today in section four. In the second paragraph, yeah, it's under zone changes and regularly, yes. In that paragraph that begins with the onset. And then the second sentence talks about how the commission had no provision to allow restaurants to engage in outdoor dining that is lengthy. And then you added the words and expensive approval process. I don't know if we need to get into the costs.
Okay.
And then, then later on in the same paragraph, you shift from talking about just restaurants to allowing businesses to operate outside. And so I'm not sure.
We can swap restaurants and business. I mean, that's just a word swap that could potentially.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're only talk, we're, you know, this is, we're only talking about restaurants here for the outdoor dining, obviously not about other businesses.
There were some retail provisions in the executive orders that we would be allowed to accommodate. Sidewalk sales and then those types of things, but, but we actually haven't seen anyone come in with those.
Okay. No, that was it. That's all I have.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, John. So that said, would we say that we have an agreement to let the Abby and the planning department move this forward to the first election office? I need that.
John, I don't have.
I'd like to make a motion to that effect. It'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I, well, all I know is I've read it and I'm comfortable with, with the, the small changes that I passed on. I don't know if others have even looked at it yet. They may want to.
When does it have to be submitted by?
It's due November 20th. So, so certainly it would be, it would be lovely to have a review this evening if possible, but you know, I'll have to submit something, even if I submit it in draft form on the 20th and the commission reviews it again on the 23rd for a final vote. We can do that too.
No, I guess in a, in a way I'd be more comfortable if we submitted it in draft because we really haven't, as a, as a group, haven't really engaged in any kind of real discussion about it. We may not have much of a discussion, but we probably should take, at least take the opportunity. And I think, I, I can't speak for everybody else, but I'm certainly losing steam myself to do it this evening.
Okay.
Yep, that's fine.
We need to have a motion.
I think basically what you're doing, we're just, what I, what I will do is I will submit what you see before you with John's changes as a draft and then final action on it will offer at the, at the Monday meeting on the 23rd. And that's totally reasonable. And the finance director and first select will absolutely understand.
Okay.
Abby, can I have a, a copy of that?
Yeah, it should have been emailed to you, but if it, it didn't get out to you, I will make sure a physical copy gets sent to everybody. So you have it in color and in print.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Okay, because I didn't see that. If it was in my packet, I didn't see.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item number nine is adjournment.
Go move.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
Good evening.
Hey, everybody.